Welcome to the April 21st, 2022 Parma City School District Board of Education Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carbores.
Sorry, present.
Mr. Christ.
Present.
Mr. Ruta.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting? And if there's a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Thank you. Everybody, this is Parma. Dr. Smiley, we get several things today.
We have quite a significant contingent of Parma students that we're excited to recognize this evening, so I'm actually going to come off of this onto the front and we can start to recognize.
So I just want to say real quick, it's great to be able to do these again. We spent two years attending meetings on Zoom and not being able to recognize our students for their successes, so this is by far a happy day for me, and I'm sure I speak for the rest of the board as well.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
He's running.
So we have a lot of our students from our Career Technical Education programs here this evening. We have really always said that Career Tech is really a crown jewel of what we do here in Parma. Extremely thrilled to have 17 different programs within our district so that students don't have to travel to others, but really, that's just a number and that's just sort of an entity that we have. It's all of you in the audience that make that such a successful program, and I mean that both the students and staff members. We have such dedicated, talented teachers that really are able to cultivate the talents and the interests and the passions of the students that come into their classrooms, and we're really proud to be able to recognize so many of you this evening. We couldn't do any of that without Ms. Plageman, who is our fearless leader of our Career Technical Education programs. So without further ado, we will introduce Ms. Plageman.
Well, thank you very much, and I'm very happy that we're back in person to present awards to our wonderful students and to our teacher staff. So first, we are going to be honoring our students from our Business Professionals of America, which is a leadership organization, and Mrs. Mary Ellen Swinger is going to come up here and say a few words and announce our student names and their accomplishments. Mrs. Swinger?
I'd like to introduce and ask Caleb Bartram and Antonio Cabrera to come up to the stage. They received honorable mention in Economic Research Project Team along with Hayden Zakar, who is not here. They did a great job. They had to create a PowerPoint, they had to create a paper and present it. Very proud of them, they're juniors. Next, we have, now, they're both not here. Ariana had to work this evening and Jada was unavailable, but they received honorable mention for Administrative Support Team. They did a team event, did a phenomenal job. Next, may I please have Mr. Maxim, Chris Maxim, come up to the stage. Chris, he got, he received second place in Integrated Office Applications. He had to do database, spreadsheet, PowerPoint. I saw his test, it was tough. I mean, I was, whoa, and he got second place, phenomenal, really, really good. Next, Jack Roser. Jack is my, one of my administrative interns at the Parma Credit Union. He goes two to three days a week and represents us. It took us 27 years to get in there, and he got us in there, and he received second place for Banking and Finance, very proud of Jack. And next, Jocelyn is not here. She is going to be Wednesday Addams in the Addams Family Production, so she received fourth place in Payroll Accounting, very good. Next, Mr. Shane Romano. He is my treasurer. He is another one of our administrative interns. It took us 24 years to get into the Parma Credit Union, and they are representing us very well. And he received third place in Banking and Finance. I thought it was payroll because he's a phenomenal, he's my accountant. Next, Anthony Rosario, and he received honorable mention in Personal Financial Management. Right now, he's working on his Microsoft Office Certification. Just a great young man, hardworking. Next, Emily Senebria, she's my junior. She received second place in Basic Office Systems. She had to do it all, database, spreadsheet, did it all, went as a junior, her first year. We're so proud of her. Next is Ruslav Yendris, and he is, Ruslav, he's a great young man. He just came from the Ukraine three years ago, and we are so happy to have him. His, he had both sets of grandparents are safe there right now. He received second place in Advanced Word Processing, great student, and that's it. So they did a great job, BPA.
Our next organization, our leadership organization that we want to recognize is our DECA program, and our teacher this evening is Mrs. Carolyn Holt-Balas, who is one of our DECA teachers at Valley Forge.
Thank you, Dr. Smiley, and Board of Education, and for recognizing our students. Congratulations to all state winners and student advisors who worked so hard to achieve these awards. DECA is a senior organization for marketing students with a mission to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management through college and career development. Our four students, second place in Personal Financial Literate, is Seth Dunn. Seth has a written exam in Personal Financial Literate, and he has a scenario qualified with the judge. He has 10 minutes for reading a scenario and 10 minutes to solve a problem, and he did a fantastic job coming second. There are over 4,000 people competing in DECA, and there's about 50 kids in each of them, so he placed second out of 50 kids. He is headed to try to be one of the candidates, and congratulations, Seth. Second place winner is A.J. Augusto, and he did a starter business plan. He is not here today, he is working, he is going to the Fire Academy once he leaves, so he is training right now because he has been involved in the Fire Academy. He has, he does a 10-page manual, written business plan for an app for Card side, Card side express. So if you find his app, you can have a car, it's a lot more work, so if you want to go to the fire idea, you can get that app, and 15 minutes on our phone to the judge. My seventh place winner is Katie Brown. She did an independent business plan. She did a 20-page manual, a written business plan on her app called Training Track, and her training track is to see life's change physically, emotionally, mentally, spiritually, through exploring and tracking. So she wants to honor her own prestige here, and this app will tell the teachers to plan a workout, meal plan, and has educational tools for business and wellness. So she put in a lot of hard work. She did a music program to get her app programmed and working, so she is on her way to run some business. She did, she has presented with the judge. She is headed to Boston University to study Sports Management, Business, and Fire. Seventh place winner, he is night shift manager at East Coast Custer's, so we'll have to work if you can see him, Jonathan Baylog. He takes, he's in marketing, a written exam, and he was on a scenario with the judge, 10 minutes to prepare, 10 minutes to solve an issue. He is on his way to try to be a student in marketing and business, so congratulations to him. My tenth place winner is Matt Lamb. Matt takes 10th in Professional Selling. He had a written exam in Marketing, and he was a sale representative for a company that has two sales out of the state. He uses auditing and consulting solutions for a convenience store. So he did a 15-minute presentation in front of the judge. So all of you, what we want to leave with you is in New England, which said perseverance is hard work, you can add to that and do in your hard work. And I just want to congratulate all of the students that worked really hard, she played in the state competition, because all of their perseverance and hard work, so congratulations to everybody.
Next, we have Aiden Bang. Is Aiden here? Aiden has volunteered his time, building skills, and craftsmanship to beautify our land lab with flower boxes for the deck in the land lab, part of this Eagle Scout project. We appreciate his willingness to come back to the Green Valley Elementary and help us out in the area of marketing.
Do you want to come up, Mrs. Parkley? I see you have a good thanks, well. We're very proud of you, Aiden, not only for being a Green Valley student, an amazing senior at Norby High School, but for beautifying our land lab. He made some beautiful flower boxes so our students can actually plant flowers, so she knows, dear love, flowers in the area, because he's not quite that. So this is an area that we can actually watch them grow without competing, so we appreciate that. And then some of our other students who cannot work, well, it's a great opportunity to work in right away, so thank you.
Hey guys, it's the Norby Swimmers that we recognize for their performances this winter in the local sports. First, we have Grace Barra, she threw grace to come up. Grace is a state qualifier in the 100-meter butterfly, finished 28th in the state. Alex Cuckoo. That wouldn't have been my guess. 11th grade at Norby, also state qualifier in the 100-meter breast stroke and finished 19th in the state. Then Michael Cuckoo in 10th grade, also for Norby, state qualifier in the 100-meter breast stroke, and finished 11th in the state. Congratulations to our Norby Swimmers. Moving right along, we have a Parma High School Wrestling Team State Qualifier. 12th grader Jamie finished a stellar wrestling career in grand style as he won his third conference championship, was selected by the coaches of the Great Lakes Conference as the recipient of the Most Valuable Wrestler Award, and then went on a postseason run that included a sectional tournament championship, a district tournament runner-up finish, and culminated in a fifth-place finish at the state wrestling tournament. This is the highest finish a Parma City High wrestler has achieved at the state tournament in 30 years. Jamie broke the school record for most wins in a season with 46, and eclipsed the 100 career win milestone this season as well, finishing with 108. I'm very sorry he isn't here, but let's recognize with a round of applause. We'll introduce the players again.
And this is going to be our third Career Tech program that we're going to recognize students for their leadership organization. This is our Teacher Professional Program that is located at Parma City High, and this is the Andy Wozniak Smith, our instructor, is here to present the awards to the contestants. So good evening, everybody. I'd love to call all five students who I'm recognizing. If you could all just come up here at the same time. So I think that the message that I have heard echoing throughout all of the presentations tonight is that hard work and perseverance certainly pay off, and the five students that you see in front of you today are perfect exemplars of that. We started preparing for the Educators Rising to the High School Competition in the fall, and we're a little bit at a disadvantage because these students have to catch up with some other programs that maybe have students in there for two or three years. So they come in competing against about 600 other students in various competitions, and they just rocket every year. We have 12 students, and five of them place and qualify for Nationals. So we'll start with Hassan Silman. He is a senior from Valley Forge High School. He participated in the impromptu speaking competition where he was given an impromptu debatable topic in the field of education. He had 10 minutes to prepare his thoughts, and he had to deliver this speech live in front of his judges. So he practiced so hard, he just would go over the topics at it, and he, every single time he would practice, he was able to deliver an amazing speech each and every time. So he has a public speaking career in his future. Jay Monday Anthony Catfish is a senior from, just means in trouble, you know, from Valley Forge. He prepared for the jabbering category where he prepared a professional portfolio, and thanks to Ms. Plageman, we were able to place his cover letter, resume, references, letters of recommendation in a beautifully bound PCSD invoice folder. So when he went in confident and with poise, his judges were just totally blown away. He was able to pretend interview for a professional position, and soon enough, he'll be able to be a professional, because all of these students will be, before they graduate, circled to be a professional. So it's kind of cool that it all is coming full circle. So awesome job to him, and a lot of people in this category as well. Mariah, I'm going to skip to you. Mariah, she wrote a speech for the public speaking category. This was an open competition, very nerve-wracking. Students from all 66 schools who were at the Educators Rising to the High School Competition were a lot of women watch, and so some of the competitions were close, not hers, and she went first. So here we come rolling in, our little boss from Parma, and you've got schools from all over Columbus, and you know, they're, you know, walking in, they're 10 minutes away or whatever, and we're like, okay, go, 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 go get your room, you know? And so Mariah, she runs across the hall, goes in, gets in her room, delivers a speech, blows them away, and places fourth, fifth, in the state. Samantha and Melia work together, they're getting here. They combined have over 1,200 field hours. Each of these two young women has shadowed in our long-term help room. They work with a Mises program, they're down there several hours a day, they're PDI representatives, so are these ladies. Every looking now, they're in their school, they're working class, they are helping other kids in their building grow and learn. So they're part of that professional line, she was down there, and they were so scared, we got sent, they didn't break a seat in public, so I did do that like five times, so she would come up and have to see, 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 so we made it to the competition. She said, okay, yes. They earned gold medal, qualified, I mean, she, Samantha and Melia, they had their little words, and they captivated judges, and the judges just, wow, they were awesome. So just a beautiful project, and a great representation on the Parma City School where they're down in Columbus, as always. So these five students deserve so much more than I could ever even give them in terms of words, but anyway, these are Educators Rising National Hall.
Our last group of students we're going to recognize is the Valley Forge Academic Challenge Team. On February 23rd, the Valley Forge Academic Challenge Team defeated Green and Cooper High School. Team members represented Valley Forge High School and Parma City School, who are most positive like in their academic skills, coolness under pressure, and good sportsmanship. The episode of the Academic Challenge aired on Channel 5 on Saturday, April 7th. In Canada Green, Grayson Trubdak and Louis Zinder. I know we could have introduced to all the teachers or faculty here, but I think this team is still a coach. It seems Chris Thomas, the best thing's coming, he has an offer here in one city school, so congratulations.
Thank you.
You should be up there with your photos in the photo. Can you just sort of come back up? I guess it'd be better. Got a photo of the coach. He's like a D8, I'm 13 minutes. So now, parents, this is your favorite, right? I think it's dismissal. Right now, would be appropriate time, socially appropriate time, if you'd like to move out by tonight, you're more than welcome to save our very full agenda. Your projections end about 9:45 p.m. We're also welcome to the car. Thank you so much for joining us, we're very proud of you, we're going to take you.
Good job. I can't believe it was leaving.
So before other kids, we recognize parents, our employees here.
Oh, yeah?
Yep.
That's awesome.
Who's responsible for the Academic Challenge Team?
Void, they're not here, I was asking.
Oh, yeah, they were, no, the tennis got canceled, but that's what I thought it was.
Also disappointed in Parma.
Yeah.
Testing.
I know. We figured you were sad about that one.
Oh, the year, honestly. Yeah, we give T-shirts to the kids when they come to their kindergarten registration. It shows their graduation, you know?
So we're going to go ahead and move on. Is there, what else do we have, Dr. Smiley?
We're going to go ahead and skip through Retirement Recognitions. You ready for information of the board?
Yes, sure.
All right, we will start with our Enrollment and Recruitment Specialist, Mrs. Jennifer Nance. Mrs. Nance joined our team approximately November of this year. We're very thrilled that she has joined our team, and we're very proud of the work that she's done in her position as the Administrative Specialist for Enrollment and Recruitment, and she's here this evening to present some of the highlights of her work. Mrs. Nance?
If you can, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Like Dr. Smiley said, I'm Jennifer Nance, I'm the Administrative Specialist for Enrollment and Recruitment here at Parma City School District. So I just want to start off with going over some goals of my department, which consists of myself and our two registrars, Katie Raybeck and Margaret Reese. I was brought on back in November to help increase student enrollment, not just across the district, which of course is my primary responsibility, but across all Parma City School District programs, things like Kindergarten Lodge, STEM, CTE, et cetera. My primary responsibilities are to recruit and retain students, of course. I'm also responsible for streamlining the registration and enrollment process and procedures, which I'm actively in the process of doing, but also improving customer service, because we are the first face that you see with Parma City School District, not just with the Registration Department, but working on improving customer service, not that there's anything wrong with it, but just seeing if we can polish certain areas when it comes to offering tours, high school tours for new prospective students, kindergarten tours for our new kindergartners coming in, open houses, so on and so forth. And then I also am doing community outreach and marketing for the entire district, and I'm doing that, and I'll get more into that in just a moment, by reaching out, focusing on recruitment, retention, and research. So currently, Parma, Parma Heights and Seven Hills has 1,970 students that are not attending Parma City School District. Of the 1,970 that you see there, 1,349 are attending in-person charter schools, and 621 of those students are attending online charter schools or e-scholes. And then we have another 178 students that we call our Open Enrolled Students that also are living in the district, not attending Parma City Schools. And you can see I have it broken down by Cleveland Metropolitan Schools, 120 students we have going there, Cuyahoga High School District, where they actually pay tuition to go to that school, and then there's others, kind of sporadically spread out, there's 12 others. Private school numbers, we don't have exact numbers, but according to the recent census, the estimated numbers are there are about 23% of students living in Parma going to private schools, 27% of Parma Heights students are going to private schools, and 35% of Seven Hills students are attending private schools. And you might be thinking, why on earth is she sharing that information for us? But I want you to see the reality of what the numbers are and what public school district is up against. Current enrollment, you'll see, this was actually taken today, I kept every single day making sure you had the most accurate numbers. Last year, on this day, last year, we were at 9266. Today, we are at 9339, so we are up 73 students. Of course, my number, and my sole responsibility is to push back against what you see below that, the projected enrollment over 10 years. So you can see, we're already above the projected enrollment for 2324, which they have us at 9169, we're at 9339. So again, all of those numbers that you see over the next 10 years, my job is to push back against that and to make sure we are above those numbers. Oh, I'm sorry, and just going back one more, I apologize. At the very bottom, you'll see that we've had 665 withdrawals since the beginning of the year as well, that affect our numbers. Go ahead. So of course, I mentioned I do community outreach, marketing for the district. So some recent events that we've done, go ahead. We held the first-ever kindergarten information night at Pleasant Valley Elementary School. It was very, very well attended. Our goal is to over-communicate with our families so that they're better prepared to start their little kindergartners off on the right foot, they know what to expect, and we want to help them make the most informed decision for their student possible. It was broken down, we had a large gathering, and then we broke it down by classrooms where they could meet with the kindergarten STEM teachers, their traditional kindergarten teachers, kindergarten launch academy teachers, and so on and so forth. And then, of course, we had our Kinderland kindergarten kickoff held at Central Office just recently on April 2nd. It was very well attended, very popular event, and we had just under 350 new families show up to attend that event. It was an all-day event. And then, of course, we had our egg hunt. I know some of you were there, and of course, we appreciate your help. It was very well attended. We had 1,500 children brave the cold temperatures and come to Byers Field. Again, it was another huge success. Just some past events that we've done over the past, well, since I've been here. We've, of course, had our College Credit Plus Night, the AP Honors and Gifted Night, new student orientation, and then, of course, we held a STEM Night to promote those programs. Upcoming events that we're having, of course, we have the Cultural Fair next week. Hopefully, you are already aware of that, April 28th at Byers Field, 5:30 to 7:30, and that correlates with the Embrace All Week that we're promoting now. I'm sure you've seen that across social media as well. That's it.
How many, how many kids came to the Easter egg?
1,500.
1,500.
And we cap it at 1,500.
That was very nice. That was a fun event.
Yeah, it was a fun event.
Your Candy Land, Kindergarten Land thing, I saw being set up the day before, and that entailed quite a bit of work.
I thought for a while I may have bitten off more than I can chew, but I pulled it off.
You had some good help, yeah. It was, it was beautiful. That was very, very cute.
Thank you.
I wish I'd been able to seen it actually happening with all the people, but, but it was neat to see.
And we couldn't have done it without of our kindergarten team and all of our volunteers.
Yeah. That's awesome.
So I want to point out three things that I saw that were not reflected in any of this. The first thing was, the day of the kindergarten thing, I was working a table at the very end for Girl Scouts. Normally, at an event, when someone gets to the end, the parents are like, come on, let's go. They're tired, they're worn out. There was none of that. There was no parent fatigue, they were still engaged, the kids were happy. To see that at the end of an event like that is impressive in ways I can't quantify. To see these kids still happy, and they had gotten through all the different stages, and just how well it was organized and laid out was absolutely wonderful.
Thank you.
The next thing that I noticed was at the Easter egg hunt, after the hunt was over, your, were the National Honor Society students were lined up, they knew exactly what was expected of them, they had their forms ready to be signed, they knew where to go, who their contact person was, and I watched them all line up with you, and you went right through their list and signed up, and to see those other behind-the-scenes things that aren't so glamorous as, you know, a field full of Easter eggs, to see all the work and effort that you put even on that, and then, the moment when I knew you were totally a Parma person now, was the face that I saw when you found the first kid who missed the Easter egg hunt, and you were like, and then, it was like, you felt it in every like fiber of your being, and then you snapped into action, and then there you were shoving candy in all these bags for all these little kids, like you were truly home here in Parma like the rest of us. So I appreciate everything you do so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any one else? Thank you so much.
Jennifer, thank you, and we're very thrilled to have you as part of the team. The growth in enrollment cannot be underestimated.
I know.
Because that is just not a trend really throughout Northeast Ohio. So for us to really start to reverse that needle is extremely impressive. I think it's really a testimony to your work, and we obviously hope that that continues.
I'll continue to work hard to continue it.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say to you also that a lot of these activities that are so wonderful in our district that happen, sometimes they have not gotten the attention that they deserve in our community. I think that's a big part of what you're trying to do as well. But some of the things that happen, I don't know that people take it for granted, but I think people don't think about everything that goes in behind the scenes to make that happen. And they just kind of, oh, it's happened, and as though it just somehow happened on its own. And I hope you understand that we recognize that there's a great deal of effort that goes on behind the scenes to make these things a success, and thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We will next hear from Ms. Popick, who is our administrative specialist for written communication. This year, she's taken on really all of communications, so we're very grateful for her willingness to be a team player, and we look forward to hearing from her as well.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Smilak, Mr. Nucio. I know how Mr. Nucio likes very efficient presentations, so I hope that this fits your --
Well played.
-- requirements. So if you don't know who I am, my name is Amy Popick. I am the administrative specialist for written communications, and it is my complete honor to give you an update about the communications department. I have had the pleasure of being in the Parma Schools since 2017, and I've really watched the department grow, so I'm really excited to show you some information about that. And also, all the pictures that are in this presentation, I have taken at events. So for example, on the front, we held a community ice skating night. As Mrs. Nance mentioned, we had our egg hunt, and then, we also do our kickoff in August, and Mrs. Marconi was so excited to lead her Green Valley Sprouts at the kindergarten parade. So that is a couple of things that are on there. As always, our district goals are to increase student achievement, improve transparency throughout our community, and practice fiscal responsibility. And for me, I would say the most important thing is improve transparency throughout our community, and that is what I'm going to show for you tonight. So some major functions of our department, I attend district events and I write about them, I'm the social media coordinator, I also do media relations, so anytime the news calls, they're usually calling me first. And I am figuring out what Dr. Smilak's schedule is so that he can talk to the news, because that's usually the person they want to talk to. So I'm also the district bloodmaster, school messenger administrator, and I do event planning and graphic design. I'm here at the board meetings with all of you. I do photography. I'm going to introduce Gary in a moment, he does all of our videography, and I'm also active in the PTA and the Parma Schools Foundation. So my team, we are a dynamic duo, I'd like to say. Gary is my administrative specialist for broadcast communications, and he's in the back, and he does all of our wonderful video work, and he has also been in the district for over 15 years. So I think that's a true sign of the dedication to the Parma Schools. And so I also like to think that our department really works closely to support all the schools in the department, so we are really there to be any sort of resource for anything that our departments need. So I want to talk a little bit about our highlights and improving transparency. So Facebook's something that's really big for us. In 2017, when I started, we had about 6,500 followers. We have now grown 94%, so we have 12,670 followers now. So we also have a daily current engagement of 800 people, and we reach about 9,000 people a day. So just to give you a little bit of comparison, we would reach about 117,000 people a month. We are now reaching 271,000 people a month. So we have grown significantly to help make sure that all of the information and great positive things about the Parma Schools is being out there for people to know about and really take pride in. So similarly, we have a Twitter and an Instagram account. Those have also grown, so we have about 4,500 followers on Twitter and then 3,500 followers on Instagram. And something else that we have really started doing this year is being at events and recording those events. So for families that can't be at those events, we have that available on our YouTube page. So for example, we went to the kindergarten information night, CCP, AP Honors, STEM, and Gary works those extra-long hours to produce them and get them up right away so people can feel like they were still there, even if they couldn't be there in person. You know, of course, we are also here at the board meetings, town halls, building our futures, just to increase that transparency within our community. For those people that do feel more comfortable at home, we want to make sure that they have that same experience at home. So we started our YouTube account in November of 2020, and actually, it was for a reason that was out of our control. We used to have a media server and the, it was out of service, so we needed another option. So we were like housing our videos ourselves, but that was public, but it wasn't very easy to get to. So we started our YouTube account, we have 426 subscribers, and we have had over 112,000 views since we started in 2020. So a lot of times I get this question of, how do we reach people who don't have social media? And that, I think, is a really valid concern, because there are some people that don't feel comfortable on those sites. So we do have a really robust website, and I really believe that anything you want to know is really on there, and sometimes it can be tricky because you don't know where to click, and it might be information overload. But we did recently redo the website to make it more visitor-friendly, and we really do take pride in making sure all that information is on the website for our families and for our community. So we've had 588,000 views since April of 2021, so that's for the year. So that's taking from April of 2020 to April of 2021. We also do quarterly monitor newsletters, those go home to 55,000 addresses in Parma, Parma Heights and Seven Hills. And I've also implemented this year a Fast Five, so it's a front-and-back document that gets printed, and it gets taken to the libraries and the senior centers, and it's just five quick things that have happened in the district for the month, and then, three upcoming events. And then, we also have our PAC TV local access channel that is on Cox 74 and AT&amp;T U-verse 99. So Cindy's in my little highlight here, because, number one, I think it's so
I didn't turn to this page yet.
It's so cute, but, so, so, you know, sometimes, like, you wonder, like, how does communications impact student achievement? Well, you know, in this picture, Cindy and I had the pleasure of reading a chapter of The One and Only Ivan, and Gary actually recorded us reading it so that the kids could have like a face to somebody reading the book along with them. And we had so much fun, didn't we, Cindy? But we do a lot of things where we help enhance those like PBIS initiatives, and we also make welcome-to-school videos, and we get students ready to learn, you know, in that other way as well. And then, we also do a lot of great coverage about the positive things that are happening in our buildings. So some fiscal responsibility highlights, we just got new equipment, so we were very excited about that. Thank you, Sean, for letting us purchase that. So our last purchase was in 2011, and the, so the average useful life of a video camera is about five years. We made ours last 11. And so we purchased three new video cameras, and we're hoping that those will last us another 10 years. And we also bought a photography camera. We actually didn't have one. I was borrowing from our digital media and creative arts, and I thought that was not fair. Our students should be using that, I shouldn't be using that. So I gave that back, and we have our own now. And then, we also bought a streamer box that, you know, we're live-streaming this right now, so that we have more reliability and making sure that is always on our Facebook and our YouTube account. And then, we also utilize our print shop, so we do bulk mail, bulk print, we reuse the signs that get printed year to year, just to cut down on any of those other costs. So some of my priorities for 21, 22 school year, so I've worked on a style guide that next year, I want to make sure that all of our buildings are following a specific brand that has, you know, information about the colors and what a really good brand should look like. Also, increasing community events with our city partners. So like I said, we held Community Ice Skate Night at Reese Rink, which was a wonderful partnership with the City of Parma Recreation Department. They let us use Reese Rink, and we let our families come in and skate, and have just a really great family-friendly day, or evening at Reese Rink, and everything was covered by our Parma Recreation Department. So they didn't have to pay for skates, they didn't have to offer skate rental, they came in and they could use the facility, and for some of them, it was their first time actually going to the rink. So that was a really wonderful event that we had. Our egg hunt, which Mrs. Nance also talked about, was a really great partnership with donations from businesses in our community. We're also excited to have our movie night again at Byers Field, so all three of our recreation departments are going to help us spread the word about this, and we're really excited to offer that again. And just trying to continue to have regular information and engagement across all media and be more visible at events is something that we are working hard to do as well. So that is what I have for the communications department, and I will have, I'll take any questions.
That was, I don't really have any questions, but I do have a couple of comments. First comment, you received an award, I know you're a little embarrassed by it, but from the PTA for the Ohio Achievement Award. That's outstanding. That's, a lot of schools in Ohio, they have a lot of people that do what you do, and you're top-notch.
Thank you.
Which tells me that we hire quality people, good people, to be at Parma City School District, and you're just, you know, one of many people that I'm so proud of to be, that have here, working for us. Also, I love how you've blossomed since 2017. Here, I saw you were this quiet, shy little girl, young lady, I should say, little girl, but you have just blossomed, you know, and it's awesome to see. It's awesome to see. So I'm very proud of you.
Thank you.
So 2017, I cannot tell you how many nights I will see Parma City Schools pop up responding to a person who had a question or needed to connect with an event, especially the week leading up to commencements, like about tickets, and here's Amy on Facebook, and she's just responding away to everybody, and it's things that nobody sees, and the hour is that she's not here, that she is still 100% dedicated to us. Also, kudos to Gary, and I don't remember if I got to see you, but Gary was on that ice during ice skating night, walking around with the GoPro, and I thought to myself, I'm on this ice, Gary, you are putting yourself in danger, okay? And here he was, kids racing all around him, and he was going around. And the PCSD in 60 is probably one of my favorite things that we get on a regular basis, because I just feel so connected with the video portion of it, so I absolutely love that. So to both of you, thank you so much.
Others?
Oh, yeah. Cindy's like, oh, it's my turn.
Accidentally, I cut you off last time. Give some wait time.
Well, my first thought is, I wish that you could turn around and look at the camera that Gary's got aimed on us, and you only see your back, but I'd like everybody to see you beaming, because that smile is a big part of the success of your job, interacting with other people. And I have had the great good fortune to work with you on the foundation, of course, and some in PTA as well. So that's been a very enjoyable part of things, besides everything that you're doing for the district, Amy. You really have been so highly responsive. Whenever things are needed, you figure out a way to do it, you're so talented, and those of us that are less tech savvy, or zero tech savvy, really appreciate that. So you're doing a great job, and Gary, known you since you were a little boy, for crying out loud. So it's nice to see you all the time, and
and some in PTA as well. So that's been a very enjoyable part of things besides everything that you're doing for the district. Amy, you really have been so highly responsive. Whenever things are needed, you figure out a way to do it. You're so talented and those of us that are less tech savvy or zero tech savvy really appreciate that. So you're doing a great job and Gary known you since you were a little boy, for crying out loud. So it's nice to see you all the time and you're a dependable guy that we always can count on to have these things working for us. So thank you for all the work that you do as well. I think you guys are a good team with getting everything done. Thanks a lot.
And Gary, I don't know if it's possible, are you able to come up here?
Can you go in front of the camera and like let everybody see your amazing face?
And Gary's a proud graduate of Parma Senior High and he went through the radio and television program, which is now Digital Media and Creative Arts. So it's a true testament of, of what our education here can afford to our students.
So not to embarrass you Gary, but you guys both, right now, turn, face the camera and wave. And wave. Gary, thank you so much. Amy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, and I would echo many of those comments, but yeah, I was, quite frankly, Amy, that was, that was a great presentation. I know you don't often like to be out front and you'd much rather be behind the scenes, but you really owned the moment and it was really, really impressive. So the statistics are very impressive as well. I love working with both of you. You are so accommodating and flexible and really in this for our team and for our students and for our Parma City Schools. So thank you so much. Great presentations to both Jennifer and Amy.
I think those are the best numbers of the night. Positive enrollment numbers and almost double Facebook engaged, like holy smokes.
Absolutely, absolutely. Do we want to go Mr. Hoon first because you have a number of them or do we?
You don't want to follow that act?
Then we have Mrs. Stropko with a series of adoptions. We continue to make sure that we avail our students to the best possible, most updated resources that we can without our parameters. And she's here to talk this evening about the latest addition of updates to our resources and curricula.
I'll follow, my friends. So tonight, you have in front of you the presentation, which is the white packet. You have a pink packet or a pink piece of paper that outlines our funding for this adoption. And then I also wanted to reference the green packet, which is really just an outline of every subject area and it has the dates of when we've adopted curriculum. I wanted you to see that because there's tiny little subject areas within our AP and we put a range up here and that way you can reference it if you need to. So tonight it's advanced placement, it's financial literacy, which will be a graduation requirement for the class of 2026. Anatomy and Physiology, which falls under Bio II, and science lab equipment, which is out of our SIR funds. Increased student achievement, the AP piece is huge. We have really been without resources in AP for quite some time. And when our kids get a score of three or higher, it also increases our score on our report card. It's very, very important to align our syllabus with resources which are connected to College Board. It's a whole different process than Ohio standards. And we are always trying to get our, our, our students and our staff with resources in the last six-year rotation. Improved transparency, you'll see our process again, and then fiscal responsibility in terms of what accounts we used pending your approval. So here is the four categories. Our advanced placement courses, our last adoptions range from 1997 to 2015. We have to align to 2019 board coursework updates and guidelines and quite frankly, some of our syllabuses were not updated because our course offerings within our resources were not updated. So this will align everything systematically and then again, connecting to our instructional playbook. Financial literacy, we actually piloted this course this school year, knowing that it would be a graduation requirement for the class of 2026. And Chris Thomas, that was up here as our swim coach, he is the one that taught this course and wrote this course according to the financial literacy standards. And I'll tell you what, across the state of Ohio, we have districts that are scrambling right now and we're in a really good place and we continue to model with our first ring curriculum directors what we are doing and I'm very proud of that. So he was very much part of that and this meets the requirement of Senate Bill One. Anatomy and Physiology, we had a science adoption last year, but we were really trying to systematically put in Anatomy and Physiology with our Bio II program because our Bio II program is very unique to Parma. So we had to take some extra time. So that's why you see that up here. And then our science lab equipment, just like PE, just like music, we have labs that are operating that are not safe because some of our equipment is not working or some of our buildings have a little bit more of something and our kids are not getting the same experience. So just like that same viewpoint, it's that equitable science piece for all of our high schools. It's stuff we could take with us should we consolidate and we need to have that lab experience for our kids for hands-on, connected with our standards. Our material review process has not changed. We look at ed reports, we look at our approved vendors, we have a rubric, we look at various companies. The one thing that you will see that's a little bit different is our chairs really looked at our inventory so we could not just get everything we want, but only what we need. A period of time for staff and public review and then tonight is the final recommendation to the board. Just a little bit about AP, which is a little bit different. AP is through College Board and we have 38 courses that's offered through College Board. In Parma, we offer 23, which is pretty impressive. And you will see that it's through English, math, science, social studies, music, art, world language, and career and tech. So we have that course diversity. Each AP course is modeled and it's comparable to an introductory college course. They have, College Board has extremely high standards and we have to follow their standards in order for our kids, one, to get college credit and two, for us to be recognized as advanced placement. So each course takes an assessment. Our kids, if they earn a three or higher in May, can earn college credit for most colleges and universities. Again, a gem that we have in our district, so, so important that our curriculum aligns with College Board. Like always, we have our teachers involved in the process and we could not do this without our teachers' voices because they are truly the experts. So this is every single course and these are all of our teachers represented from all three high schools. So I always like to thank our educators for going above and beyond here. So just a little bit before Amy gets into the details, you will see six different publishing companies and that's not to confuse you or stress you out, but it is certainly when we get into that AP piece, we could only pick vendors that are recognized through College Board. And unfortunately, there's a few, very few selections and we really dig deep with what will work for our kids in Parma and also how it's connected to the playbook. I would love for it to be one company, but that's just not how it works with AP. So we wanted to break it up according to our vendors so that you understood. And then also, when we're looking at this, it looks like a lot of courses, which it is, but we only have so many sections in each of our buildings and so the cost is not as high as your math adoption that you previously adopted. So I'm going to turn it over to Amy for the details.
All right. So I had the pleasure to work with all of those teachers you saw up there, all from the very many contents and each and every one of them came into this wanting to find something that they felt would make their kids successful and that was the number one priority. So what you're just going to see here actually are from their actual rubrics, some of the things that they mentioned about the different companies, but also the ones that they chose. So the slide that you're seeing right now is from BFW Publishing. We are looking to recommend our AP English 4 Text, Literature and Composition. One of the biggest things that they were looking for is getting kids writing and getting kids reading constantly. They are wanting to, at this point, really propel kids to look at what's next in terms of moving on into college courses for writers and readers. So this text really provided them that. The next one was AP Statistics. And AP Statistics obviously is your higher level math course. And so a big ask is that it correlated with the AP expectations and that the chapters really immersed kids in more of that application and probability. And this textbook is one of the ones that definitely was recommended within their AP College Board forum, which is also where the AP teachers kind of talk with each other and kind of work because a lot of high schools don't have that many AP teachers, so this is a place for them to converse. Next was AP Micro and Macro Economics. Chris Thomas, just like our financial literacy course, was also one who helped with this selection as well. And he worked alongside Michael Stringer and they looked at this textbook as one to provide not only just overall economics for students, but once again, they are looking for something that they said in real world connections and the higher level AP textbook needed that. And then the last one actually is AP Psychology. It was one that we piloted that was approved earlier in this year for the pilot. And it was resoundingly, when I went back to the social studies teachers for who taught AP Psych this year, they wanted it to return as part of their rotation for the next adoption. All right, Perfection Learning. So this one has three of our books, or one of our books, I'm sorry, AP English 3. This is the version where you're going to see they're immersing more into the depth of text and writing in connection with that. They were looking for, as they called it, practice with a lot of rigor attached to it. They felt their kids needed to really propel from getting ready for AP 4. Savis Learning, we've used prior and this textbook, Campbell Biology, actually was one that was the updated version of a previous text that they used for Campbell Biology, but this is the AP version and they really felt it aligned with the framework of not only AP, but also our Parma playbook. And then the last one was one that this music teacher was, she was wonderful to work with. First, she's been working with nothing pretty much for the last several years to teach AP Music Theory. And one of the things that she mentioned was that AP Music Theory is for those group of kids that really want to move on as a music major or move on to really that connection of even looking at colleges that have that music as their main feature. And she said the kids are expected to do so much and what she's had to work with to get them to that level has been very difficult. So she is beyond thrilled to be able to have her students have the ability to have a real text that they can really use their talents with. And then the last ones that we'll talk about is Cengage Learning with Calculus. So AP Calculus is another one of our higher math courses where we're going to see that they really need to make connections. And one of the things that the two teachers that worked on this, Jen McCullough, former math coach, was really talking about was that we needed to have texts that kids were actually doing math and thinking math. And one of the things that they talked about was this textbook actually has ways for kids to connect with QR codes and be able to digitally do tools, which is something that they felt like they have never had before. And then the last one to talk about actually is not a textbook. College Board also provides pre-AP course framework and we recently added this into our registration guide as pre-AP English 1 and 2 honors. And what this is, is we are preparing students to get ready to take AP courses. So they do not get a college credit with this course. It's more so preparing them and taking that pre-AP classroom, which is the same one that looks much like AP classroom, utilizing the same instructional routines, providing them extra texts that are a little bit deeper and using our current board adopted curriculum, in this case would be Study Sync. And they combine the two to get approval to be a pre-AP course. So it's a little bit different than just a textbook. It's more so you're adopting a instructional framework. Next up was our Financial Literacy Committee, as I spoke to before, Chris Thomas and Michael Stringer. They worked tirelessly on both this and they touched base on the AP Macro and Micro. So they were ones that really gave a lot of hours beyond. While he was trying to be a swim coach, he was, you know, coming on a Google Meet with me to tell me his thoughts. So it was really appreciated. So the recommendation that they came to was Personal Financial Literacy. And the text really surrounds, and one of the biggest things they were looking for is they wanted to immerse kids in the understanding and application, real life. They didn't just want to spit information at the kids. They wanted to have it relate to kids and they wanted to make sure that kids were doing things with that information. So this text fit that bill alongside with that they wanted it to be one that could be digital platform so that they could also use that effectively with their class. So this is actually the same company that they use for their government textbook. So they also liked the idea that the kids, you could really create this pathway of learning that they were used to that instructional framework that perhaps the company has kind of embedded. This is really about authentic purpose and practice and it's also about using everyday skills, so your math skills, enforcing that understanding that people need to be financially literate and really see how much benefit at an early age it is to understand that before you really go out into the real world. And then the last one to talk about is our Anatomy and Physiology, our Bio II course. Our Bio II teachers did an awesome job of really digging in. And actually, we've had this conversation for over a year where they've been just trying to find what fits the best for this course. And this course surrounds a lot of authentic learning in science. And so this involved not only Anatomy and Physiology, but they take into consideration just going deeper with biology standards. And so this textbook needed to give them that window of providing us Anatomy and Physiology standards, but also giving them extra resources possibly to fit some of the other topics they use in Biology 2. So the core, or the textbook that they ended up with was from Savis. It is a Pearson textbook, so they're kind of, the companies married together and they're selling a Pearson textbook. And this one, just like the other ones, is really about letting our kids feel and understand science. So it has labs, both digital and ones that they could use, the new science equipment that they would be getting, so that they can really get kids to understand Anatomy and Physiology. A lot of our career tech courses, like our Biotech course, they get to do a lot of those things. This course also provides that opportunity as well for our students to be able to do that. And next up is science lab equipment.
Okay, so science lab was a priority for the vision of our curriculum adoption, just like music, just like PE. And all of our department chairs created an inventory and we looked at our Bio I, our Bio II, our chemistry and our physics courses and we prioritized. And so anything in, I don't know if you could see it on your sheet, but if you turn around, anything in yellow is what all of our buildings will have. So microscopes, balances, hot plates, stirs, lab drying ovens, and pH meters. Those are the necessities. So all three buildings will have the same amount and brand new. Where you see the little bit of a difference, and these are just highlights, because if we listed everything, we would be here forever, but just going through where all of our kids might have the same, or not might, but will have the same opportunity, where you might see some things on the Normandy where you're not going to see things on the Valley Forge, it's because at Normandy, those things are broken or we don't have inventory of. So what we did, and I just love our science department chairs, is that now all of our high school lab equipment is exactly the same. And it's up to code and our kids can engage in that hands-on learning, which is truly where 21st century learning is all about and what should be happening. We always have feedback, so our feedback surveys to all of our staff that were involved, our community. We have our implementation plan, like all of our adoptions. So we have pre-recorded webinars, we have initial training sessions, and then we have that ongoing collaboration, which we integrate into our teacher-based teams. We did have some community feedback. Anything in which there were questions, we contact them individually. Everything was positive specifically about financial literacy. So I want to turn your attention to this pink document. So I want to turn your attention to this pink document so you could understand the breakdown of where we are funding this. So every year I sit with Sean, and we go over where we're at in terms of the next year and what's up for adoption. So we allocate funds for new textbooks, the general fund. We also have federal funds. And this year, we were able to take $73,000 with our expanding opportunities. So we get that line item because we have economically disadvantaged students, and that falls under Title 1. So we were able to use that and allocate some of our funds for our AP courses. Again, our AP courses are niche classes, and so it's a smaller amount of kids that register. But boy, having all of that aligned could really increase our achievement levels on our state report card. The rest of that was through our general fund. Financial literacy, we're getting ahead. It's a requirement for the class of 2026. Again, general fund, our Bio 2, general fund. And then our Science Lab Equipment is our ESER. And that was also part of our allocations for the 20% that we used for curriculum. So all of this is a six-year print teacher additions, class sets, and digital platforms, the same concept that we've used for every single adoption. And just to reiterate, I've already given you valid talking points on student achievement, how we involve our communities, our families, our teachers in the process, and then I just went through fiscal responsibility. So at this point, we will answer any questions that the board may have before adoption.
There's a lot of stuff there. You guys did a lot of work in a short period of time, I'm sure. But I appreciate the thoroughness of getting it all together for us and kind of dumbing it down for us, which is great. And spending our money wisely, so that's good. So I look forward to a lot of things. I love the financial literacy piece. And I don't know how Chris does that, because that was very difficult to coach and teach and be good at both. And that's stellar, that's a stellar guy right there.
Yeah, we love him.
Do you want to bring him back for another picture, Mr. Vaughn?
I think so.
So I think my favorite thing, not that I don't love the whole thing, but the music theory, to give every student's passion, equal opportunities, and to give their instructors, their teachers, the chance to come to the table and have that same conversation about how they teach their students as we do our core subjects, is really kind of powerful for our students. I really love that. This, the kind of map that outlines when things have been adopted and stuff is wonderful. And I would have loved to have a before and after, before you were the assistant superintendent and after, because so many of that is recent years because of the work that you guys have done. So it's incredible. Also, so not just the Normandy swim coach, but I do notice over the last several adoptions that a lot of our coaching staff throughout the three schools are part of these leaders in our things. And I think that that's really incredible. I had asked Mr. Vaughn, because I couldn't remember who our academic challenge instructor was, and that was Voita.
He was part of Social Studies.
He does the model U. I mean, just to see how engaged they are with their students and keeping them excited about learning and stuff like that, we really, truly, I'm glad that they don't just engage with their students, that they engage at the higher level to make sure that it's better for everybody, not just staff. I mean, I just, I really love that. So thank you for all your hard work on this. I'm good.
When's the party to celebrate?
Right, so this is adoption 28, not this year, but in the course of the three years. And next year, we only have Science Fusion for elementary and middle. So we are up to date. And I want to thank you because you allow instruction to be number one in this district and have allowed us to do our jobs. So thank you so much.
That's why we're here, right? That's why you're here, educate kids, and that's the important thing.
I think Mr. Ruda has.
I'm just going to throw you for a loop and say that I don't have any questions for you.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Ruda.
As always, you do a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Sharco. Thank you, Ms. Zermatt.
Thank you.
We really do have one more. I know it's been quite an evening, but we know that
Restful laugh.
The situation in Ukraine has certainly been on many of our minds, especially given the fact that we are home to Ukrainian Village. And so we want to make sure our communities understand how we are prepared in case we get really an influx of refugees. We have yet to experience really significant numbers, although I know just this morning we had a couple of Greenbrier. I just, my heart just breaks for these kids. I mean, they really are uprooted from their homes and, you know, have some relatives here who are doing the best they can. But I just, I personally can't even imagine what that must be like. I mean, you want to talk about trauma and the need for trauma-informed practices. But we do have a series of steps in place with community resources and partners. And Mr. Hoon is gracious enough to be here this evening to describe those.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Smilak. I'm going to have to bend down a little bit here. Just do this.
The diva wanted a podium.
Well, I, look, I talk with my hand, so this is really unorthodox. So thank you, Dr. Smilak, and the board, and Mr. Nusio for the opportunity. Sean, I promise, this is five slides, going to be the fastest presentation I'll ever do. But I appreciate the opportunity to just update the board, but also the community on some of the supports that we're looking into to support not just our students, but the families that we know that are going to be coming into our community. And I've got some updated numbers as of yesterday. As Dr. Smilak shared, we did get a couple of additional refugee students in today. But really, and to be very transparent, you know, this isn't just education, right? I mean, this is about the well-being of our students and our families that are coming here, quite literally in crisis from a war-torn country with their families split apart. Some of the stories from these students to our teachers has been heartbreaking, but also not just the refugee population, but also to our students who have lived here in Parma for years, who have family members back home. So to hear that coming from a first grader at Green Valley is truly gut-wrenching. So I'm pleased that we have taken some steps that I want to share with you tonight in collaboration with the Refugee Response. I just want to highlight that organization as well as where we are currently in PCSD and sort of what this partnership, which truly is just the starting point as far as I'm concerned, you know, on how we can try to address and support our student population, not just from the Ukraine, but also any others that may come up. Certainly, we could point to the district goals. All of these would be applicable. But most significantly tonight, this is truly looking at the transparency throughout our communities, not exclusively just Parma with Ukrainian Village, but truly all three of our communities that we represent. Some context for those of you who may not be familiar, the Refugee Response is a nonprofit organization that is based out of Cleveland. Their mission is to empower resettled families to grow roots and supporting them to become engaged, self-sufficient, and contributing members of new communities. Some of their numbers in the year 2021, and we felt this in Parma Heights especially, specifically with Pleasant Valley Elementary, Greenbrier, and Valley Forge, as foreign events transpired with the US withdrawal from Afghanistan, we saw a significant and quite frankly, unanticipated influx of Afghan refugees to our community. The Refugee Response is sort of that intermediary organization. So they helped with more than 350 new arrivals from Afghanistan, not necessarily in Parma, but in the greater northeastern Ohio area, from everything from food to household goods to helping facilitate school enrollment, long-term housing. And then in CMSD in particular, they provided more than 500 one-on-one in-person mentoring sessions to students. I stress the in-person piece because we know what the year 2021 was like for all of us as we navigated the pandemic and social distancing and quarantines and all of that. So I thought that that was a very powerful number, that despite all of those environmental hurdles, they were still able to connect with 50, or I'm sorry, 500 students in the greater northeastern Ohio area. Dr. Smilak and I, along with Chrissy Kruicek, who is one of our administrative specialists in the Curriculum and Instruction Department, have been working really, truly since early March on trying to pinpoint what organizations are available to support our students and our families and our community. Dr. Smilak and I have attended a couple of events at the Parma Heights Baptist Church with community leaders, trying to put our heads together to try to exhaust truly all resources that we have at our disposal in Parma. On our March 18th In-Service Day, more than 50 staff members in Parma, our home liaisons, our school counselors, our psychologists, and our EL teachers worked with the Refugee Response, as well as representatives from Catholic charities on trauma-informed practices. How do we support our students who are coming here as refugees, be it from Ukraine or from somewhere else? Currently, about 8%, just slightly below that, in the Parma City School District are identified as English learners. That means that they are taking a screener mandated by the state of Ohio, and it dictates a level of language need that they have. So Level 1, they have a very limited English proficiency. Level 3 means that they're getting close to no longer requiring those services. Just for context, the majority of our population does tend to be a little bit in the Parma Heights corridor with Pleasant Valley, Greenbrier, and Valley Forge. Valley Forge is where we intentionally put a lot of our resources at the high school level, and I mention that for purposes here in a moment. From our friends with the Refugee Response, as well as Catholic charities, we are likely to see in Parma a dramatic increase in the number of refugee students. Historically, with regards to Parma, we have settled 79 Ukrainian refugees alone in 2019. And that was before there was a conflict that they were trying to escape. As many of us know, President Biden pledged to take up 100,000 Ukrainian refugees. Dr. Smilak and I attended in March the Ohio Summit on the Ukrainian refugee that was attended by members from Senator Portman's office, as well as Governor Dwyane. And everyone in that room at St. Vlad's on State was very much, were ready to take them in with open arms. So Dr. Smilak and I looked, and we're like, okay, we've really got to make sure that we have supports in place because we know it's a matter, we don't know how many, but we know it's a matter of if, not necessarily, not just when. So we know that we anticipate the influx into northeastern Ohio, specifically Parma. We anticipate also with the economic climate that we have with rising housing costs, we may see resettlement of immigrants to Parma where there are established communities from other immigrant enclaves, be it in the United States or elsewhere. Specifically, and this is as of yesterday afternoon about 2:00, we have 13 students who are presently identified of refugee status, and 13 of those are Ukrainian. So that, just to give you a little bit of context for this population that we're talking about. So finally, the partnership, I want to stress that this is absolutely to no cost to the district. There is no underlying fees that will be associated with this. This is truly a collaborative partnership with an organization that is desperate to have access and support this population in a school district that has plenty of space, but we desperately need the assistance in supporting outside of our school day and engaging with these families. So specifically, the initial steps with this, and I've spoken several times with their executive director, Patrick Kearns, first and foremost is enrollment and family assistance for the newly arriving families. This also is helping to identify when they get located into the greater Parma community because they may end up here, but we may not know about it. And they certainly may not have the tools or the understanding how to get a child enrolled in the American school system, right? I mean, they're truly, literally just coming here. So it could be enrollment assistance with our registration department. It could be orientation assistance into school in America, service referrals for students who may need additional services such as mental health, social and emotional support, things of that nature. We are looking at establishing an after-school programming at Valley Forge for students who are of refugee status and are at the high school. Again, Valley Forge is where we intentionally structure a lot of our English learner population so that we can have a pool of resources there rather than spread them out. We're trying to keep them there at one building so that we can have layers of services for our English learner population. Specifically, we are looking at after-school programs through tutoring and mentoring, sports and arts through trauma-informed care and social and emotional learning. We are looking to initially serve up to 35 students, three days per week, with in-person activities. And finally, and I think this is a significant thing for me personally that I've struggled with with our diverse community, is creating original content for families to help them understand and access the great supports and the programs that we have in Parma. We have a very diverse population, and I can't even begin to tell you the number of different languages and diverse community, across our diverse communities. And I want to figure out ways with Amy and with Jen Nance, how we can continue to promote and support their access to the information that is so vital to helping their children learn. So again, shortest presentation of my career, I promise you. But I wanted to share with you kind of where we are right now. This is, for me frankly, a starting point. There's still a lot of work to do, and I would rather overplan for this and overanticipate and hope that, you know, whenever we have students enrolling, be it from the Ukraine or from other, you know, other parts of the world, we are adequately able to support their needs, not just inside the classroom, but also their needs socially and emotionally. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them as best as I can or get back to you.
I have no questions, but I do have comments about how proud I am that our district is able to do this. I was at the St. Vlad's service where all the community members got up and supporting, with their support, you know, the mayors and whatnot. And I was like, I was sitting in the back, and I was like, yeah. I go, but I don't see art representation. And then that's when I immediately called Charlie and talked to him about it. And he assured me that he was ready and had the right guy on the job. So that's outstanding. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I'm sure the children from Ukraine and their families appreciate it, that we'll be ready for them.
Yep. As best as we can.
Thank you.
So my kids came through the Valley Forge cluster, so I have PB kids. This year, we don't have anybody at Greenbrier, but I only have two schools to deal with. But we've always had a really diverse population at Forge, even when I was there. And our kids, my children, are better off because of the interactions they've had with different communities within the Valley Forge community. And to have a school district that makes sure that all of those students are equally supported is incredible. And even this morning, I was at Pleasant Valley, and there was a translator working with a mom. And to see, she walked in and she was very upset because she couldn't adequately communicate her needs. The translator came down, and to see kind of the worry wash away from her and her to be able to understand what was happening with her child. And I have no idea what, I didn't listen to the conversation, I just, you know, was reading her body language. But to see that that's kind of the welcoming environment that we have, far beyond, you know, the conflict in Ukraine, which I hope is, will be behind us at some point in the near future. They're always going to come here, and the more we prepare for that and the better we do when these families arrive here, the better our community as a whole is going to be. So I appreciate all of the effort and energy into making sure that we're ready for them.
I agree. Thank you.
Well, I can't, I can't even imagine what these folks are going through. You know, every time I look at something on the news, I just, I can't even, in my wildest dreams, imagine being in that position, especially with children.
Sure.
Young children to care for and having that happen. I'm so impressed with what's already been done to ensure that these children get as much support as we can possibly offer them. And I appreciate that this is the beginning, actually, of what you'll be able to be doing. It's so necessary, and I'm so very pleased that you're going to be able to do it. My immediate thought was partly what you've addressed, Mrs. Karpis, is I see this as a really great opportunity for our students that are already here
Agree.
to develop a better empathetic feeling about their fellow students and to hopefully be a part of this, embracing them and welcoming them into our community. Because I think we all need to, and hopefully adults as well, I think we all need to be reminded of how fortunate we are not to have been in that kind of a situation and being able to support these kids. What I'm, really, I guess my only question is, is there any funding support from anywhere that would help with these circumstances?
So as far as the Refugee Response, they self-fund, so they have a lot of very large foundational support for their organization. Mrs. Plageman and I have looked at a couple of grants that are out there through the state of Ohio. Sorry, she must have stepped out. A lot of those depend on the number of refugees that you have already received. So we're not quite there yet. And frankly, if Parma doesn't have them yet, I'm not sure anybody else in Ohio really does, quite honestly. So we are keeping close tabs on some of the grants that are available at both the federal and the state level because we do want to be, you know, certainly sensitive to some of the costs with this. We are also continuing to review our EL program to make sure that we have adequate support for them. And then to Mrs. Karpis's point, we currently have five part-time EL mentors who help us with translating. with translating for students throughout the school day. We're always looking for additional support for Ukrainian populations, Arabic, Spanish, and things like that. So we are trying to do that. All of those, those types of things would come out of my federal Title III fund for English as a second language.
Well, I know, well, you've mentioned it here as well, that President Biden has committed to as many as 100,000 Ukrainian refugees coming, and I, but I have not heard about funding support for communities that have welcomed those refugees in, so.
Yeah, and the thing for the refugee, for the refugee piece is that they would have to relinquish their Ukrainian citizenship to come to the United States. So you see, that's why you see a lot of them in Poland. I mean, you know, the summit that Dr. Smilak and I attended was, you know, two refugees were crossing into Poland every three seconds, which if you actually think about that in a quantifiable number is mind-blowing, tens of thousands per day. So, but again, to go to, to take refugee status, there are some legal pieces there, and there's some flexibility with that considering the crisis. So because we have such an established Ukrainian community, it's logical to assume that a lot of them would opt to come to a place that feels a little bit more like home in a very foreign place, so.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
So I know this is probably not practical on a large scale, but when we do the closed captioning, like on our videos and our meetings and things like that, do we have a service that does the closed captioning in different languages?
I'll have to look into that. Probably depends on the different platforms. Gary? I'll check with Gary and Amy on that and get back to you. I think it's a great question.
Hey, that would just be interesting, based on that we do have a large, I mean, almost 10% of our students.
Correct.
So I can, I imagine that the family level is probably higher than that, actually, so.
Sure, absolutely.
Do we have, is there a certain certification requirement for a translator that you would have to have for the district?
So to be an official translator and interpreter, there is some certification for that. You know, the job description is certainly posted out there. For us, we're not necessarily looking for any of them to interpret things. It's truly just translating. Interpreting is when you're going a little bit more in-depth.
Gotcha.
But there are specific, to be a third-party interpreter, there are some specific qualifications to meet that criteria.
I'm just thinking, we have such a large Ukrainian population in our community that I would speculate that perhaps there are folks in that community that would like to help out and be involved in this, and would we be able to take advantage of that, or is that not possible because of?
It could be. And again, full transparency, four of the five EL mentors are residents of Parma. So many of them have students in the Parma City School District. There is one who lives, I think, in Brooklyn, so right around the corner, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The question section was longer than the presentation.
Yes.
Sorry about that, Robert.
We really appreciate Mr. Hoon's work to make sure we're prepared, because we know that we do embrace and embrace all paradigm, and I think that this is one of those times where that is clearly on display in our district. The only other piece that I had is very much in line with Mr. Hoon's presentation and the words I just offered, but we do have Embrace All Week next week. Cruzek from Mrs. Strapko's department has worked hard with our home liaisons and our Embrace All advisors, putting together a number of different activities. But most importantly, we do have a cultural fair at Byers Field next Thursday night, April 28th, from 5:30 to 7:30. The entire community is invited. Essentially, we really look to display the ways in which we are honoring our Embrace All mission statement, which we actually board adopted in 2019. The Parma City School District honors the uniqueness of each individual and embraces diverse backgrounds, values, and points of view to build a strong, inclusive community to prepare for lives in a multicultural society. That is what we've tried to live, and that is what we will display next week, and we hope for a great crowd next Thursday at Byers Field from 5:30 to 7:30. This concludes my part of the evening, sir.
Only 90 minutes into the board meeting.
We have a lot to be proud of. This is, that's a lot of hard work by a lot of great people that we had on display tonight, so thank you for the time.
Second to that, you got it. All right, communications, Mrs. Carpus, you have nothing, right?
I don't, but I think we should skip immediately to the PTA Council.
Poor Monica Abbott.
Because she has been sitting back there so patiently.
She's gonna, she's been texting Melissa Wolf to say, how'd I get this meeting?
So before we let Sean talk, let's get her up here.
Very good, good call there.
Can you stretch, yeah, stretch out, we'll do some yoga.
My name is Monica Abbott. I am the First Vice President of the Parma Council of PTAs. So hello and happy spring, everyone. Last night, Parma Council enjoyed our spring dinner with many special guests and our units, of course. We honored our award winners and installed our 2022-23 officers. So thank you, of course, to everyone that attended. It was, it was very fun. Everybody had a good time. We are very, very excited that tomorrow we'll be holding our winner's circle. We have not been able to do that for years. So amazing. So we will visit all three high schools and announce the winners of almost 100 scholarships totaling $80,000. We look very forward to hosting our scholarship dinner on May 18th for these winners, the sponsors, and of course, their family. Next weekend, PTA delegates from all across Ohio will meet up in Columbus for our annual convention. We look forward to, of course, networking, training, and bringing back many helpful resources for our community, our school community as well. Thank you for everyone that purchased flowers, vegetables, plants from our geranium sale. The orders will be delivered Saturday, May 7th, at, here at Parma Senior High in the back parking lot. We will have a drive-thru style pickup, so hopefully the day will be amazing as far as weather is concerned, because we'll be, all be outside. Our last general meeting of the year for our Parma Council of PTAs will be held on May 11th at 9:45 a.m. at the library on Powers Boulevard. Our incoming and outgoing officers, or our luncheon, I'm sorry, will be held immediately following at 11:30 for presidents and our principals. And as the school year starts to come to a close, all of our units are busy, of course, preparing for next year. We look forward to learning more about what fun is to come. So thank you so much, and shine bright together. And I apologize, I didn't bring a crown for everyone else.
I was just going to ask you if you brought Miss DeRara back.
If you want to email those pictures.
I'm sorry.
I sent mine out. I sent my photos in, yeah.
I didn't get any, of course, I was upfront, so.
I have not seen any on social media, and I'm very appreciative of that.
Oh, don't worry, we're saving it for the calendar.
I'm going to send you one right after the meeting, Charlie. I've got.
Make sure to get it to Amy and Gary. It can be in the PCSD.
Sure, we can't just send one over, so you can put it up.
It was a special, special night.
It was fun.
It was wonderfully done. Also, your geranium sale, the pickup line in the back there, phenomenal, every year.
It is great.
So it is a well-oiled machine.
Yes, yes.
What time does it start, the pickup?
For pickup for, I believe, starts at?
10 to, I think it's 10 to 4.
10 to 4.
Yeah.
So we need some time to set everything up, so.
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit. We will be there at 7:00 if anyone wants to come here. We'll be there at 7:00 till about 5:00, so.
What day is it?
May 7th, I do believe. Yes, Saturday, May 7th. I believe there's a couple, maybe a prom or something that evening as well.
Possibly. Thank you so much.
It was a lovely, a lovely event last night. You folks did a nice job. And I would just like to mention the, the award winners, the, the folks that did win awards. The Helping Hands recipient was Susan Rennecker. She's a secretary at Densler Elementary School. And Tracy Fechner Cirelli is the Special Education Advocate of the Year. Do you know what school she was from? Was that Pleasant Valley? No. I'm not sure. Do you?
One of the high schools.
One of the high schools. Parma. I think she was, she was Parma Senior High, yeah. She was the Special Education Advocate of the Year. And Renee Zarnak, the principal at Densler Elementary School, was the Outstanding District Educator of the Year. So it was really nice to see those folks recognized for the great work that they do all year long, and we appreciated that. So, but it was nice, and I can't wait for winner's circle tomorrow, so let's get rolling.
Well, this time I won't have to change clothes. All right. So I thank you. Thanks for bringing that up, too.
Right, Sean's got communication stuff.
I do. So I can give you an update on House Bill 126, which went to committee in the House and the Senate did pass an amended bill, which went to the governor's desk on April 15th. He has 10 days either sign it or veto. If he doesn't do anything, it just becomes law. And as of Tuesday, he hasn't done anything, so I think he's just trying to avoid it, and it'll just go into law. But some of the things that are in the amended bill is it prohibits us from filing any type of complaint against residential properties, which we don't really file many, but there are some. The only thing we're allowed to do is to file a complaint on it. The property was sold within the last year, and there's a $500,000 increase over the auditor's value, and it's 10%. So it's pretty much only be large properties, maybe apartment complexes. It doesn't allow us to do any private settlements with these companies, which this year's brought in $1.6 million. That's, they'll be outlawed, we're just going to get nothing starting next year, which is a big hit to us. And they kind of shame us into putting resolution on, it requires us to put a resolution on, or a resolution on the agenda if we want to file a complaint against, a counter complaint against a homeowner, I'm sorry, not a homeowner, but a business. We have to give seven days' notice to them, that we're going to have a vote. It really is trying to shame us into not doing it at all. So it kind of hurts us, and we'll probably lose funds the next three or four years.
Yeah. Do you have any idea how much that could be, Sean?
This year, we've taken in $1.6 million in private settlements.
I just texted Governor Dwyane, and I said, please don't sign it. It will cost our district a million plus a year. So not that that won't do us much good, but I want everybody to know that it's bad for public schools.
Yeah, it's definitely bad for us. So that's all I've, I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Very good, thank you. So anything else?
Uh-uh.
All right, we get to move on. Do we have any amendments?
No.
Excellent.
Let's fly through.
Public participation? Oh.
Yay.
All right. All right, so I move to adopt Resolution 2022-04-127, approval of the written record of proceedings from March 31st, 2022, regular, and March 31st, 2022, Special Board of Education meetings.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-04-127. Roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-04-127 has been approved. Unfinished business, Mrs. Carpus?
I do. We will have the first reading of Policy 2465 on May 5th. It was previously known as Suspension Expulsion of Disabled Students, but now we'll have a new name and several changes after much hard work by Mr. Hoon in his office, and will reflect person first language and current practices in ORC, so I'm very excited about that.
Excellent, thank you. Curriculum, Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-04-128, approval of overnight out-of-state field trip.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-04-128. Any question or comments from the board?
I actually think Mr. Zaramba is still here as well.
Is he still there?
I was going to mention something about that, I'd say.
I mean, that's impressive.
Thank you.
I'm often impressed by the Normandy band director, but it's about 9:30 by my count, so. Thank you, Mr. Zaramba.
So this, Mr. Zaramba, as long as I, as long as we're talking about you, this Disney trip that these kids go on is an outstanding thing. I know my daughters, who are both Dazzlers for you, Mr. Zaramba, both look forward to going, and they enjoyed not only the master classes they got to take, but the parade down Disney Lane or wherever that is. So I know they enjoyed that, and, you know, you are the Pied Piper of band directors. I've never seen a band so large. So thank you so much for that, and trip's going to be approved as soon as we all say yes. Okay? So roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
I don't know. Yes.
Also, Mr. Zaramba, I think the mask mandate is gone, so we won't have to worry about bus number two.
Thank you.
Mr. Bratz.
You're welcome.
Thank you for hanging around.
Really classy.
Wow. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-04-129, approval of financial literacy curriculum adoption.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-04-129. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-129 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-04-130, approval of biology II curriculum adoption.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-04-130. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-130 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-04-131, approval of adoption of AP Biology, Calculus, English III, English IV, Music Theory, Pre-AP English I, Pre-AP English II, Statistics, Macro, Micro, Economics, and Psychology.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-04-131. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-131 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-04-132, approval of extended daycare parent tuition increase effective August 1st, 2022.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-04-132. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I comment?
Absolutely.
Very modest increase. We decided several years ago to just try to at least provide a little bit more operating income for EDC, and this reflects that commitment without, you know, breaking the backs of our Parma family, so we're hopeful for your approval.
Yep, thank you. Anything else, anybody? Roll call, Ms. Nucio, please.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-132 has been approved.
Unless there's anything else that another board member would like to discuss, that will conclude curriculum for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratz, and thank you for remembering today to say the end.
Oh.
It brings us to business. Mr. Ruda.
All right, I move to adopt Resolution 2022-04-133, authorizing to dispense with competitive bidding requirements and award a contract under a cooperative purchasing agreement for, purchasing agreement for LED lighting at Byers Field.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-04-133. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to comment on this. I know we had sort of a last-minute email from a community member, and very fair question, you know, is this appropriate expenditure of money? First of all, it is Esser funds, which, you know, are not part of our general fund. We do have a specific set aside from Esser, which was mandated for increased student opportunity. We allocated much of that to athletics, much of it to arts as well, so this is part of that. The other piece is that these LED lights, because of the way they are more energy efficient, will actually pay for themselves within seven, eight years. So it really is an investment that in the long term will save money. And finally, those lights are like broken, literally. I mean, we almost couldn't host, we had 12,000 people in the stands for the St. Ed's Medina game, and the lights went out. We had about a 25-minute delay. We were actually nervous about turning them back on. We did turn them back on without incident, but that was touch and go for some time. So this is not superfluous. We, we need an upgrade. We have the funds specifically in an Esser account for this, and again, they are an investment long-term, which will pay investment long-term which will pay for themselves.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody?
It was not specific, too, to that event, and it's important to note that Byers Field is used in the evenings, not just by football, but tons of our, you know, tons of different things, and they literally have to be shut down and cooled off before they can be powered back on. So you have large delays which end up being overtime and other things. So really, I think it'll pay for itself even quicker, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else? No? Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-11133 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-04-134, authorizing purchase of portable two-way radios.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-04-134. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-134 has been approved.
All right. Unless a board member has anything else to discuss, this will conclude business.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. This brings us to you, Mr. Kreis, finance.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-04-135, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-04-135. Any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Nusio, can you explain this to everybody?
Sure. This is an annual thing. The Budget Commission, every year, sets the rates, so our, especially our emergency levies, they go up and down every year. So as property values go up, mileage goes down, and as property values go down, mileage goes up because you want to get the same amount of money. So every year, any levies that are like emergency levies, the rates have to be approved by the Board of Education. It's an annual procedural thing.
Perfect. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else? Nope. Any roll call, Ms. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-135 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-04-136, approval of the March 2022 financial report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-04-136. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-136 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-04-137, ratification of investments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-04-137. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-137 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-04-138, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-04-138. Any questions or comments from the board?
There is a large $2 million.
Kind of hanging out there, Mr. Nusio.
I saw him turn around and like, so that's in the self-insurance fund, the health insurance, self-insurance fund, that it's funded either by general fund or by employee contributions. Claims have been up probably $2 million this year. So we have money in the account. The balance is around $5 million, but claims are up, so we're appropriating money so we can pay the claims of the members and their spouses and children.
Okay. So you need it, right?
Yes.
Clearly. Okay, very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Excuse me. Yes. Resolution 2022-04-138 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-04-139, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-04-139. Any questions or comments from the board?
And holy smokes.
Lots of the luau stuff up there.
Yeah.
Well, as normal, I get to say thank you so much for everybody donating. That's quite generous of you, and we appreciate that you remember Parma City School District as you give, and I assure the kids will appreciate it immensely, so thank you.
Can I just make one more remark about the donation from the foundation?
Absolutely.
To Green Valley Elementary School for their PBS program. The foundation, Parma City Schools Foundation, is donating $1,000 to each of our schools this year for use with their PBS, PBIS program, and it's not showing up all of those schools at one time, so I just want to make sure that people understand that we didn't pick out certain schools to favor over others. They're all getting that money.
Oh, great. Great. Thank you. Thanks, again. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-139 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Legislation, Mrs. Carpus.
I do not have anything tonight, other than the fact that there are new maps that were approved. I did not have time to memorize their configuration, but we'll have handouts at the next board meeting.
Awesome.
Unless anybody else has anything for legislation, that concludes legislation.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
I remembered.
Thank you. Appreciate it. This brings us to Human Resources, Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move to adopt resolution 2022-04-140, approval of following certificated exhibits, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, approval of certificated non-compensated leaves of absence, acceptance of certificated administrative resignation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-04-140. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-140 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022-04-141, acceptance of certificated retirement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-04-141. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-04-141 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022-04-142, recommendation for continuing contracts 2022-2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-04-142. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just like to congratulate these folks on taking this next step in their career. It's certainly not a rubber stamp. There's a process, and we're proud to honor them in terms of really tenure status. They have proven their worth to our schools and our children and our families, and we congratulate them.
That's awesome. Yeah, thank you, and congratulations to those fine people. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.